Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular meeting of the Temple City Council for Thursday, August 15th. Please rise as Superintendent Reverend Shelton Rhodes with the Greater Zion Church, leads us in the invocation, followed by our pledge, which will be led by Kevin Beavers, Director of Parks and Rec.
Thank you, Mayor. Can we hear the bell, please? Our Father God, Lord, we just come humble before you once again to say thank you for how you continue to watch over our great city, our mayor, our mayor pro tem, all our city council persons, Lord. We just pray for your continued wisdom and your favor and your protection in upon our great city. Ask that you continue to order our steps as we do business, and, Lord, we ask that you just continue to watch over this great city and our surrounding areas. We thank you for all of these things. In Jesus's name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. We'll move on to item two on the agenda, which is the time for public comments. Citizens who desire to address the council may do so on any matter, as long as you've signed up prior to this meeting. Public comments will be limited to three minutes. No discussion or action will be taken by the city council. We do have one person that has signed up, and it looks like David Douglas. Yes, sir. Come on up.
Yes, my name is David Douglas. I am a volunteer at the museum, I'm a museum board, and I have the club, I'm the president of Central Mod Club that runs the Movie Depot, and I'm here to, the Temple Train Show is coming up on 24th, 25th September, so every weekend, city employees are in for free. But it's a largely attended ceremony in Convention Center, Mayborn Convention Center, and it opens up at 10 o'clock on that Saturday morning. I'd like for you to all to attend. I have some flyers if you're interested, and thank you for your time.
Sure, thank you. You leave those flyers with Ms. Borges, and she'll be sure to get those handed out to us. Thank you, sir. The next item is actually a public hearing to receive comments from Mr. Keith Gaines. Mr. Keith Gaines had a change in his schedule and will not be able to attend, so right now I'll accept a motion and a second to table this item until later.
There's no action required.
No requirement? Okay, good. Then we'll move on. Item four is bond items. Actually, it's items four, five, and six, and I'll read them all in together. Item four is the first reading, the first and final reading in a public hearing to consider, for consideration and action with respect to the seventh supplemental ordinance to the master ordinance establishing the city of Temple, Texas, utility system revenue finance program related to the issuance of City of Temple, Texas Utility System Revenue Bonds Series 2019. Item five is also the first and final reading in a public hearing, the consideration and action with respect to an ordinance authorizing the issuance of $18,450,000 City of Temple, Texas Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2019, authorizing the levy of an ad valorem tax, and the pledge of certain revenues in support of the certificates, approving an official statement and a paying agent registrar agreement, awarding the sale of the certificates, and authorizing other matters related to the issuance of the certificates. Item six is the first and final reading and also a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance authorizing the issuance of City of Temple, Texas Limited Tax Notes Series 2019, authorizing the levy of an ad valorem tax in support of the notes, approving an official statement and paying agent registrar agreement, awarding the sale of the notes, and authorizing other matters related to the issuance of the notes. Ms. Bernard.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and council. As read, you have three bond issues before you tonight. We opened or received bids on those bond, all three bonds, this morning at 10:00 a.m. I want to briefly go over the source of payback for the bonds and what the bonds, the projects that they will fund, and then turn it over to our financial advisor with the recommendation of the low bid. First issue or item number four, the utility revenue bonds, the projects that they'll, the project funds were 22 million. The projects that will be funded with these bonds are the Bird Creek Interceptor Phase Four of $12 million, Charter Oak Water Line Phase Two for $3 million, our new Pepper Creek Elevated Storage Tank for $2.9 million, sanitary sewer evaluation survey and remediation plan for $2 million, then the Leon River Interceptor Phase Two, a million, $20,000, and then some minor water treatment plant improvements, and then some contingency funds. Again, total project funds were 22 million. On the certificates, or back up on the water sewer utility revenue bonds, the payback source of funds to pay the debt service are from water and sewer funds, and though our current rates that are in place today are, were set to fund those bonds are covered by this bond issue. Going to the certificates of obligation, project funds were 18,450,000. These are to support our current transportation capital improvement program for funds to construct Poison Oak Road improvements, Phase One and Two, Kegley Road improvements, Phase Two, and then to purchase the Park Centralized Administration Building for $2 million. The source of funds to pay back these bonds, they are tax-supported, and it is within our current tax, INS tax rate of the .3630 cents. And lastly, the limited tax notes, their project funds were 1.3 million. It was to purchase garbage trucks, for garbage trucks, some heavy equipment in the street department, and then the solid waste software or the route ware. And just to note, these limited tax notes, they have a seven-year maximum life, and the payback, source of payback are funds for those will be from general fund revenues or the sanitation system revenues. And at this time, I'd like to introduce Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance, Inc. He will go over the bid tabs and recommend the low bidder for each series of bonds or notes.
Great. Thank you, Tracy. Dan Wegmiller with Specialized Public Finance. Thank you, Mayor, council members. As Tracy laid out, we received bids this morning at 10:00 a.m. As we go through every process, when you sell bonds or notes or COs, we get a rating assigned. That rating is great feedback for you all, but it's information for investors who are going to buy the bonds and the notes and the COs to determine if they want to buy based on credit quality. So with the utility revenue bonds, we went out for the rating. We had a conference call to discuss all the various aspects. It lasted about an hour, going through all aspects of your utility rates, projects, future needs, and your rating was affirmed at AA stable, which is the second from the highest rating possible. You have AA, AA+, and AAA. So you're just at that third run down, two steps from AAA. One of the highest credit qualities, especially on utility systems that you'll come across. They noted the affordability of your rates. They noted the good operational management practices. They also noted the strong debt service coverage, extremely strong liquidity, and then the good financial management. So that AA rated, rating really sets you up well for a good sale this morning. We also, on the tax side, it's totally separate analysts, different group, rating it from S&amp;P, they also affirmed your AA rating, noting very strong management, very strong budget flexibility, and strong institutional framework. So the investors were given very strong, stable ratings for AA for both tax and utility-supported. I placed before you, there's three different bid tallies. The first one I'll mention is the utility system revenue bond, Series 2019. You received five bids today. They were exceptional bids. I think they're probably the lowest bids, or at least near the lowest that we've ever brought to you. RW Baird, Robert W. Baird, was the low bidder at 2.122736%. That's an extraordinarily low interest rate on long-term debt. It's not always fun to go borrow and have to go into debt to a degree, but at 2% money, it's pretty extraordinary. So that's good timing to fund these projects. The cover bid was BOK, which is Bank of Oklahoma Financial Securities, at a 2.190485%. So seven basis points beyond what the low bid was. The next set of bids is the 17.82 million Combination Tax and Revenue Certificates of Obligation. We received five bids from that one as well. On that one, RW Baird was also the low bid. RW Baird has had a history of bidding and working in negotiated syndicates for you, so they stood out, along with all these bid and bidders. They've been very focused on being in position to sell your bonds, because they have a lot of investors wanting to buy City of Temple bonds. Here, 2.175453% was the low interest rate. The difference between the utility and the tax is just structure. We structured the tax side on the COs a little differently. That's why the interest rate was a little higher, just on how the structure, but very competitive, similar rates. The last one I'll mention, which I think is really incredible, the seven-year note, the 1.21 million, you received four bids on that one, and the interest rate is 1.132088%. So basically, 1% money to go out and fund those items.
So, wonderful news today, very aggressive bids.
So wonderful news today, very aggressive bids. I'm here, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have related to the bids or the ratings.
I'm here, I'll be glad to answer any questions you have related to the bids or the ratings.
Carol Palumbo with McCall Parkhurst and Horton is here as your bond counsel.
Carol Palumbo with McCall Parkhurst and Horton is here as your bond counsel.
If you have any questions on the items listed.
If you have any questions on the items listed. Thank you, Mr. Wegmiller. Thank you, Mr. Wegmiller. Council, any thoughts or questions on this? Council, any thoughts or questions on this?
Good news. Good news.
Then at this time, I will open the public hearing for all three items. Then at this time, I will open the public hearing for all three items. If you would like to participate in the public hearing, please move to the podium and state If you would like to participate in the public hearing, please move to the podium and state your name and address for the record. your name and address for the record. There being no one, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll move on to vote There being no one, I will now close the public hearing, and we'll move on to vote on item four. on item four. So council, I will accept a motion and a second on item four, if so desired. So council, I will accept a motion and a second on item four, if so desired.
I move for adoption of item four as presented. I move for adoption of item four as presented.
We have a motion and a second. We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary? Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long. Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker. Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Morales. Mayor Pro Tem Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Item five, same thing, council, a motion and a second.
I'll make a motion to approve item five.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
And item six, a motion and a second?
Motion to approve item six as presented. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Moving on to item seven, it's also is subject to a public hearing to conduct the second of two public hearings to receive comments on the proposed tax rate of 67.27 cents per $100 valuation for fiscal year 2020, which is the 2019 tax year, and to announce a meeting to adopt the proposed tax rate on August 23rd, 2019.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm getting ready to make sure you all have this presentation memorized.
We can give it if you like.
Pop quiz on it, yes. So thank you for the opportunity. Again, I know you've seen this a few times, so I think it's important to provide context around the discussion on what you're considering as it relates to the property tax rate. So I'll try to be very brief, but as you know, we've done some extensive planning this year, so I want to at least provide some highlights. So you know, we've been working on the update to our city strategic plan, and we have made a commitment that this plan is going to be an active plan, that we implement, that we work, that we track, that we report on, that we keep you as the city council and our citizens updated on our progress in implementing and bringing the goals of the strategic plan to life. To do this, my recommendation to you this year has been that you approve a budget that aligns with the strategic plan, and then that we establish departmental team and individual work plans that are based on the actions in the strategic plan. So in support of this effort, we've really approached our budgeting process quite differently this year than we have traditionally done. So instead of planning our work one year at a time, we, I have asked each of our departments to do two things. First, to prepare a departmental work plan that is in support of the strategic plan that you all have worked on together over the last 10 months, and then to prepare a budget that proposes the resources necessary to effectively carry out that work plan. Tracy and her team have also been amazing. They have developed a financial model that allows us to accurately assess the ability for us to fund the proposed action items within the departmental work, departmental work plans. Again, this goes back to the intention that the plan is one that's active and implemented. In order to be implemented, we have to be able to financially afford to do what we are saying we're going to do, and so this financial model has allowed us to estimate the resources necessary and available to accomplish what we're setting out to do. The time period that our plan of work and our associated budget covers is FY 2020 through FY 2025. So this is a six-year plan versus the traditional one-year plan. So this year, when I filed my proposed budget with you all at the end of June, I presented you a proposed business plan that incorporates the final draft of STAS recommended strategic plan, again, based on the work that council did over the last 10 months. This timeframe, again, is between FY 20 and FY 25. It also has a proposed financial plan that identifies the resources necessary to implement the strategic plan during that same planning period. We'll still ask you to adopt an annual budget to formally adopt the resource allocation plan for the first fiscal year of the financial plan, which will be fiscal year 2020. The business plan includes our proposed capital improvement plan that aligns our capital projects in support of the strategic plan, and finally, the business plan proposes an annual work plan for each department that details the priority action items we will be implementing in support of the strategic plan in FY 2020. So again, we still have a one-year annual budget and an annual work plan for your consideration, but we wrap that around with a five-year financial and capital plan for a total, total planning horizon of six years. We're doing this because we don't want to look at the piece, the picture, one piece of the puzzle at a time. We want you, as council, as our community leaders, as you're making decisions, to know how each decision item that you, that you are, that's brought before you fits into the bigger picture of the vision that you have set for our community. This year, we committed to being future-focused. We challenged ourselves to look into the future and approach our planning from a longer-term view, and to set an intentional direction for the organization for the next six years. We challenged ourselves to plan both for the things that are critical to maintain the temple that we love, the temple you and I chose as our home, but we also challenged ourselves to consider the need to grow, change, and innovate so that Temple will remain a place that the next generations will also love to call home. So with that general background, I want to provide a few highlights of the business plan, beginning with the strategic plan. It's very important that before you start planning individual steps along the way, that you know where you're going, what your ultimate destination is. So we start with the end in mind, and what is the vision that the council has for the community in the future. The vision that you set through workshops with council and staff is that you want Temple to be a place that you'll love to call home. That's whether you're a resident or a business. We want Temple to be that place that people choose to call home and love to call home, and continue that into the future. Our organizational mission is simple. We want every employee throughout the organization to be able to know what that is and to live it out, and so our mission is simply exceptional service without exception. We have five organizational values, commitment, innovation, integrity, and accountability, and collaboration, and the city council has identified four focus areas. These are our general areas of priority, and that's high-performing organization, places and spaces, public safety, and infrastructure and utilities. So the focus areas, as I mentioned, are general areas of priorities. Underneath that, in the strategic plan, you've set out nine goals. Our goals are what we want to achieve. Underneath the goals, we've identified commitments. The commitments are what we're going to do to achieve our goals, and the initiatives are the specific actions we're going to take, how we are going to do it. So those are all laid out in detail in the strategic plan that's available in full online, but I do just want to quickly highlight the nine goals. Those are, one, we want to be an organization that's committed to performance excellence. We want to have community leaders with a bold vision and intentional direction. We want to have a talented and dedicated employees who have a heart for service. We want an open, responsive, and accountable government. We want to be a city that supports well-managed growth and development to promote a thriving economy. We want to have beautiful spaces and unique experiences. We want neighborhoods where people love to live. We want infrastructure and systems that support exceptional services and community growth. And finally, we want a safe and healthy community. Our overall goal, again, is to bring all of the different pieces of the puzzle together, all of the various services that we provide, all of the hundreds of, upon hundreds of decisions that you as the council make each year as you govern this organization and our community, to come together, to create that vision that you have for the community of Temple being a place that you love to call home. We want to be able to clearly connect each of the decision points that we make and each of the line items in the, in the budget that's proposed before you into the broader vision and the broader picture of Temple being a place you love to call home. So that's, that's what we're working on and what, working to achieve with this six-year A few highlights, we'll start with public safety. As it relates to our police department, a few of the highlights in the, that are proposed in the financial plan are to expand our patrol districts from our current system of eight patrol districts to a new system that would allow our community to have 10 patrol districts, so adding two patrol districts to both provide additional coverage in the growing areas of our community, in particular in West Temple, and also to provide enhanced coverage in the core of our community where we receive a high volume of calls for service. We're also recommending the completion of the staffing for our violent crime enforcement squad, which allows us to proactively investigate and prevent violent crimes. We're recommending a neighborhood and district community policing program that would add both an additional community-oriented policing unit to our force, as well as add safety ambassador, civilian safety ambassador positions to help support our sworn officers, and increase the presence of our public safety personnel in our parks, in our downtown, and in our neighborhoods, so that we continue to have a safe and healthy community. We're recommending the addition of a property crimes detective unit to keep up with the service demand as our community continues to grow. We're recommending the addition of some civilian support staff in the police department, again, to provide enhanced services as our community grows. We're recommending the addition of a fire squad unit to one of our fire stations, Station Four on Waters Dairy, to provide enhanced coverage to the southern portion of our city, again, as we prepare for future growth in that area, and we recommend the addition of fire personnel to provide a full-time staffing for that squad. We're recommending the replacement of two ladder trucks, as well as one of our fire engines throughout the course of our six-year planning period. We're proposing the potential for a general obligation voter-approved public safety bond that would allow us to enhance the training, training equipment and training systems that we have for our first responders, as well as potentially expand the animal shelter to allow us to continue offering limited no-kill service to our community, again, as our community grows, as well as the potential to expand the pet adoption center at our animal shelter. We're recommending the addition of some animal services field officers, as well as pet adoption center staff to support our community as we grow. We're recommending the expansion of a solution-based co-compliance program that we began a few years ago, really working with our citizens and our neighborhoods to connect people with the resources necessary to provide sustainable solutions to code compliance concerns. So lots of tools in the toolbox and not just a citation or a ticket, trying to find, find resources that will sustainably fix issues. As it relates to places and spaces, we're recommending a neighborhood planning program be created that would systematically create individual neighborhood plans for about 20 neighborhoods that we've identified in the core of our community. These are our historic, our original neighborhoods. In many cases, they're neighborhoods that are in need of revitalization and investment in public infrastructure to help, to help spur that revitalization. We believe that an individual approach to neighborhood planning is the right way versus a one-size-fits-all, because each of our neighborhoods have unique needs and unique character and unique things that, that will make them the most successful. So this involves both planning for the physical infrastructure needs in our neighborhoods like capital improvements, but also the social infrastructure that will help neighbors get the tools they need to lead in their own communities and remain engaged, and have neighborhoods that are thriving and full of life. We're recommending the implementation of housing reinvestment strategy that would allow us to reinvest in housing in some of our neighborhoods, especially those neighborhoods that are in East Temple, and really are in need of some strategic housing reinvestment for neighborhood stabilization and revitalization. We're recommending the addition of two Transform Temple crews. One would be an additional crew in our daytime hours that would help us cover the expanded areas that are being revitalized downtown, including the Santa Fe Plaza area and the Market Trail and the MLK Festival Field, but also an evening crew that would allow us to provide additional coverage for the evening and weekend hours for the services that Transform Temple provides. We're recommending an update to our downtown branding and wayfinding, as well as a new downtown website. We're recommending the consolidation of our special events team into, into one team, and the addition of resources into that team to help us plan more community and special events to encourage the vibrant downtown and other areas of our community. We're recommending the update to our destination strategic plan, as well as an update to our brand and marketing efforts as it relates to our visitor attraction efforts, as well as management plans for our Mayborn Convention Center, as well as the Railroad and Heritage Museum. The financial plan contemplates the potential for a Parks General Obligation Bond election, so we have a placeholder there. Specific projects we would recommend be determined based on the updated Parks Master Plan that is currently underway and scheduled to be completed later this year. The financial plan recommends the creation of a master plan and a concept plan for our public library facility. As it relates to utilities and infrastructure, we're recommending the creation and implementation of a mobility or a transportation master plan that would help us identify the next investments that we need to make in our roadways, in our sidewalks, trails, and bike lanes. We also have a placeholder for additional mobility and transportation improvements that come out of that capital planning work in the amount of $50 million recommended in the financial plan. We have three street maintenance crews, additional street maintenance crews recommended in the financial plan, including a street reconstruction crew, a right-of-way crew, and a patch crew, as well as the addition of a concrete crew, which would help us to maintain our sidewalks and our trails, as well as address gaps in our system to provide for more connectivity in our sidewalk and trail system throughout our community. We're recommending a systematic approach to reducing our sewer overflows by implementing major capital improvement projects, including the Knob Creek and the Williamson Creek trunk sewer line improvements, but also by studying each of our individual sewer or wastewater basins through a series of smoke testing, manhole inspections, videoing of the lines, and developing a strategic approach to capital investment in each of our basins to target our resources where they would make, be the most effective to reduce sewer overflows. We're recommending additional crews in our water distribution department in order to expedite the repair of non-emergency water line leaks, as well as perform, perform other necessary maintenance on our water lines as our community continues to grow. We're recommending the expansion of the water treatment plant, which would be the addition of another membrane treatment facility that would add over 11 million gallons of treatment capacity to our plant. We are also contemplating the need to expand our wastewater treatment plant. We are also contemplating the need to expand our wastewater treatment plant, the Temple-Belton Wastewater Treatment Plant, in conjunction with the City of Belton. We are recommending the addition of four solid waste routes throughout the course of the six-year plan, including two commercial routes and two residential routes, as well as developing and adopting a solid waste master plan or management plan. We're recommending the expansion of our Public Works Service Center, as well as the construction of a new recycling center for our recycling operations. As it relates to high-performing organization, we are recommending that we implement the Baldridge Performance Excellence Framework throughout our organization to ensure that we are following best management practices and that we are being the best stewards of the financial resources that we have to our community, where we're providing the best service for the best value. We're also recommending that our four largest departments pursue accreditation, so Parks, Public Works, Police, and Fire Departments would all work through their respective agencies. We're also recommending a very specific performance excellence program around customer service. We've heard from council that this is a high priority area. This would allow us to develop a program that would train, equip, and hold accountable our employees to make sure that we are providing exceptional customer service throughout the organization, especially as it relates to the frontline and the people that are the ones talking to our citizens and interacting with our citizens every day. We're recommending the consolidation of our marketing and communications efforts, as well as an expansion of our communications department in order to provide a more robust communication strategy, so that we're able to provide more information to citizens and provide more opportunities for citizen engagement with their local government. We're also recommending the addition of personnel in our development services area to help us to continue to provide a high level of service as our community continues to grow and we continue to be very active in development, both residential and commercial. Specifically, we're recommending the addition of a business navigator position in our Planning and Development Department that would help walk small businesses and startup businesses and mid-sized businesses through the development process and make sure that they have the support and the resources they need to get their permits and their projects approved quickly, and that we are able to encourage investment in our community from businesses of all sizes. We're recommending a new airport executive terminal, as well as the addition of professional customer service staffing at the airport terminal to provide, again, an exceptional level of service, as we see the airport as one of our gateways into the community, especially for our corporate community. We are also recommending an extensive investment in technology throughout the course of the six-year plan, with many of our software programs needing to be reinvested in, as well as many new programs we would like to implement in order to make sure that we're, again, providing the most effective service at the best practices with the best price and the best value that we can. Finally, we are wanting to make sure that we become and are continuing to be an employer of choice as an organization. There's a lot of things that go into that, but compensation and benefits is certainly one of them. You'll hear me say often that we are a service-based organization. What we do is not make something. For the most part, we're providing services, and we provide services primarily through our employees. So if we want exceptional services, we have to have exceptional employees. So there's a lot that we need to be concerned about as it relates to attracting, retaining, developing our most talented, the best and the brightest to come to work for the City of Temple. One of those things, of course, that you talk about is compensation. Council has, you've had a detailed presentation on our police and fire compensation study that we conducted this year. We are lagging our market, so our salaries for police and fire, our entry-level police officers and our entry-level firefighters are 14% and 15% behind the median starting salary of our peer cities. So one of the primary proposals in the FY 2020 budget is the implementation of compensation adjustments that would bring our first responder salaries into a more competitive market position. Snapshot of the FY 2020 proposed budget, you can see on the screen the revenue and expenditure categories by fund. The total recommended overall budget is just over $175 million. This budget is supported by a proposed tax rate of 67.27 cents per $100 in taxable valuation. That is an increase of 1.15 cents from the current tax rate. The impact of that increase for the average homeowner is 96 cents per month, per $100,000 in taxable valuation. The impact on senior citizens, so those who are aged 65 or older and have a homestead exemption, the impact to them is $0 per month, because their tax rate is capped, their tax, not tax rate, but their actual tax bill from the City of Temple is capped. These are the budget parameters that we work within to present a solid budget proposal to you. The foundation of that is fiscal soundness. You've heard some snippets from the most recent bond rating that Tracy and her team have gone through in the last month. We've been reaffirmed as a double-A bond-rated organization, and so a lot of that goes into the fact that we have a history and a plan to continue our fiscal soundness. So we do that through balanced and conservative budgeting. We have a four-month rainy day fund balance, so four months of our operating expenses is tucked away and not touched, just for some, hopefully, never occurs event, catastrophic event. And then we have a consistent policy for the use of our unreserved fund balance, and that's to spend that on capital expenditures, strategic investment grants, economic development grants, and other grant match funding. Important dates upcoming, today you have your final public hearing on the tax rate. Next Friday at 9:00, you have a special meeting where you will have your final public hearing on the budget, and then you will consider adopting the budget and setting the tax rate. Again, that's next Friday at 9:00 a.m. in this room. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Counsel, thoughts or questions? Seen it a few times. We've probably got most of those ironed out already. Okay, very good. This item is subject to a public hearing. At this time, I'll open that public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Mr. Mayor, thank you so. Counsel, my name is Alan Lytle. I live at 504 Paseo Del Plata here in Temple. I am a taxpayer, and I am over 65, so I do have the tax rate exemption that stays the same. However, of course, if the evaluation goes up, I understand I have to pay more money. But there are others in town who don't have that exemption. And I've noticed in reading through some of the things in the packet, that the taxes and the, what am I looking for? The value of your taxable properties in Temple has grown considerably and continues to grow, as we have more and more residential properties and additional neighborhoods going in. And I'm concerned that that's not enough to continue to fund the city with additional monies without increasing the taxes on the existing individuals in town. I notice also we have over 200 projects this year still open, and almost 60% of them are not complete. So I'm concerned that perhaps our five-year aggressive, and very beautiful plan, by the way, but it's very aggressive, is perhaps a little too aggressive. We need to back off just a little bit and use just our existing incomes to fund our projects, but let them kind of go for six or seven or eight years, rather than strictly into the five-year plan. Excuse me. My other concern is, along with the increase that we're going to be experiencing in our water and sewer rates, that this is going to have an extreme impact on the economic viability of many of our restaurants in town. And I say that, didn't get anybody looking at me funny, so that didn't work. I say that because most of the folks in Temple are on fixed incomes. They're not going to get a raise this year. They may not even get a raise next year. And so they're going to have to cut back somewhere, because they're still going to want to pay their taxes, and they're still going to want to have water and sewer. So it's going to impact the economy of Temple, not so much in the income of the, for the city, but in other areas, because people are going to have to cut back to pay their additional taxes. Thank you so very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lytle. And we agree, we know this is an aggressive plan. We set out intending to have an aggressive plan. And originally, the tax rate, to your point regarding the property evaluations, the tax rate to accomplish these goals originally was almost double. The increase from 1.15 cents, it was around 2.7 cents. And with the valuations taken into account, Tracy and her team put together a financing plan that would allow us to have a 1.15 cent, which is about a 4% increase on the MNO portion of the tax rate, 1.15 cents to be able to accomplish all of these goals, which includes public safety raises. It includes, you know, bringing some, as Ms. Myers mentioned, it includes bringing some software programs up to date. And as she said, we've been working on this for 10 months, and this was intentionally aggressive. And it's, to me personally, as the mayor, it's not a matter of sort of slowing things down if we can and being less aggressive. I believe that we have to be more aggressive to get caught up, because in past years, in my estimation, we have not been aggressive enough. So that's, you know, Tim Davis's opinion, but I think this council is comfortable with where we're going. But again, thank you for your continued participation. You always bring up good points, and I very much do appreciate that, very much, both from you and Ms. Creach. So thank y'all. Anybody else? No?
Mayor, I just wanted to clarify that for the over 65 homestead exemption holders, it's the actual taxes that you pay that is frozen.
The dollars, not the rate.
Right. Yes, sir.
Yeah.
It's the rate that was frozen, not the amount.
It should be the amount you pay, like the dollars.
Two dollars.
The rate did not.
And it's the City of Temple that has that, so other entities that you pay taxes to might not, so we can certainly, I'm looking at the record right now, so it hasn't gone up for the City of Temple, but other taxing entities may not have that tax freeze.
Right. Not every entity extends the tax dollar freeze that the City of Temple does. Okay? You bet. So you can go to those restaurants, right? Enjoy your Cracker Barrel or something. Okay. All right, very good. Is there anybody else that would like to comment on this item? No? Then at this time, I will close the public hearing, and I'd like to announce that the meeting to adopt the proposed tax rate is set for a special called council meeting on Friday, a week from tomorrow, August 23, 2019, at 9:00 a.m., right here in these council chambers. We'll move on to the consent agenda. All items listed under this section that's called the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the city council and may be enacted by one motion. If discussion is desired by the council, any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any council member, and will be considered separately. Council members, are there anything that you'd like to pull from the consent? No? If there being none, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is items A through K.
Motion to approve A through K.
Have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Mall.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Pro-Tim Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye.
Moving on to the regular agenda, item nine is the first reading in a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance approving a conditional use permit with a site plan to allow motorcycle sales and repair facility, which is Indian Motorcycles on Lot 1, Block 1, Luby's subdivision, addressed as 3925 South General Bruce Drive, and located within the I-35 corridor overlay Gateway Sub District. Ms. Lyerly.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, my councilmembers. And on the screen, I have an aerial of the property. The subject property fronts General Bruce Drive. It's the site of the former Luby's Cafeteria, and it is located north of the intersection of Bird Creek Drive and Government Drive, which is a private road. And at that intersection of Government Drive and Bird Creek Drive is the Cross Church. It's on the west side of the intersection. It is formerly known as the Temple Brethren Church. And then on the east side of that intersection are some offices, just to give you a little bearing of where this property is located. As you mentioned, this is a request for a conditional use permit to allow motorcycle sales in a repair facility. The applicant's proposed naming the place Indian Motorcycles. The proposed use is allowed by right in the property's commercial zoning district, but it does require a conditional use permit in the property's I-35 corridor Gateway Sub District. I have a zoning map on the screen, and the property is in the red area, which is showing that it is commercial zoning district. It is surrounded by a mix of zoning districts to the east of the property, where you have the lavender shading. That is light industrial district, and that's the site of the AT&amp;T retail area. And then to the south of the property is some additional light industrial, where I mentioned where those offices are located along Bird Creek Drive. The yellow area is where the Cross Church is located, and that is owned a single-family one. So there's a mix of general retail, commercial, light industrial, and then retail to the south of this property. And this is the rendering that the applicants have submitted for their proposed motorcycle site. And then this is the conditional use permit site plan that the applicants have submitted. And as I mentioned, it is the site of the former Luby's Cafeteria site, so it is within an established building and an established parking lot area. And on the site plan, you can see that there are actually two access points from General Bruce Drive. The most western access point actually is a side road or an entry into the rear of the parking lot for that building, and then another entrance into the main area in front of the building. To the south of the property line is Government Drive, which I noted earlier as a private road. And also, you'll notice that there is a little rectangular building. It's a brick building on the site. It's a leased property, and presently, there is a church that is leasing the property. And so the applicants have submitted also a conditional use permit traffic reroute proposal. And so what they're proposing, since they are proposing to have some motorcycles displayed in the parking lot in order to ensure safety for their proposed customers, they are proposing to reroute the property, or reroute the traffic flow from Government Drive, where they enter into the parking lot, and rerouting it along that retail, that leased building on the property to the adjacent property to the east, where the AT&amp;T retail center is located. The property owner actually owns this site, as well as the adjacent property where the AT&amp;T center is located. And then they have a second picture exhibit that they've given us, and they're proposing to put bollards across that south boundary line where the Government Drive is. The lease is up in that building that they have on the property for the church, so they're proposing in February of 2020 to place the bollards just across the street. There would still be access from Government Drive around the bollards and around that leased brick building on the property. I have the thorough map on the screen, and as you can see, since the property does front General Bruce Drive and I-35, you can see where that's noted as an exp- you can see where that's noted as an expressway. And then Bird Creek Drive to the south of the property is noted as a collector. I have some pictures of the, the actual site. And I have a picture of where the front part of the site is, where we have the existing building. And as I mentioned earlier, the, the most western entry from General Bruce Drive to the property actually is this side road that, that comes into the rear property or the parking area of the existing building. And then, of course, to the north is General Bruce Drive. And to the south is a picture. This is what the, the property looks at the south boundary line. You can see where Government Drive actually stops as far as pavement. And then you can see where it is the, the subject parking lot. The buildings to the south are the buildings I, I mentioned earlier, the offices that are along Government Drive is, and you can see where they actually, the way the properties are located, you still have access to the other properties onto the subject parking lot. And then this is the, the access ramp that connects both parking lots. This is taken from the subject property. This is, the brick building is the rental, the leased space that I mentioned earlier. And this ramp connects both parking lots, as I mentioned. And then, of course, this is General Bruce Drive to the west of the, the subject property. And with all conditional use permits, we have a criteria that we look at when we're reviewing conditional use permits because they usually involve nuisance prevention. And we look to make sure that there's safety throughout the, the business. And we look for pedestrian and vehicle safety throughout the, the site of a conditional use permit. And criteria number, well, C and D, they address pedestrian traffic in, as well as vehicular traffic, access points, driveways, and those, those type of items. And so as far as this request, it is compliant with the future land use plan. It's compatible with the surrounding uses in zoning. It's compliant with the public facilities that are available to the site as well as the thoroughfare plan. And so we sent out nine notices within property, within 200 feet of the subject property. We only received one response back, and that's noted as an A. They were in favor of this request. That is property that is owned by the Cross Church, which fronts General Bruce, I mean, Bird Creek Drive. And so staff is recommending approval of the requested conditional use permit in the site plan with the following condition. And that is, that would be that development would be subject to the conditional use permit site plan, as well as the elevation exhibits. And at the August 5th, 2019 Planning and Zoning Meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted five to one to recommend approval of the proposed CUP per the staff's recommendation. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer those for you.
Lyerly, council?
Do have one question. When the bollards are up on Government Drive, the workers in the office buildings south of there, who presently come through there to get onto General Bruce Drive going north on the interstate, what, how, are they gonna have to make some huge loop?
No, they would, the applicants are proposing that they would, they would still be able to go around on their parking lot, around that brick building, to the ramp, to the adjacent AT&amp;T parking lot.
Okay. You made mention of that. Because that, that parking lot, now you can't get onto it, but they're gonna grade it so that it's open?
Well, it is open presently. That little ramp is, is there.
Okay. All right. Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm just wondering, where's the repair facility gonna be? Is that gonna be inside?
It's inside. Yes.
Else?
Can I still get a Luann platter?
Unfortunately not.
No, but you get a motorcycle.
All right, very good. This item is, is subject to public hearing. So at this time, I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Very good. There being none, then I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion for approval on item nine.
Motion to approve item nine is presented.
Second.
Motion in second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Law?
Aye.
Councilmember Walker? Councilmember Williams?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Morales?
Aye.
Mayor Davis?
Aye.
Item 10 is also a public hearing to consider adopting an ordinance amending the city's Code of Ordinances, Chapter 38, Waters, Sewers, and Sewage Disposal, to bring this chapter into compliance with state regulations and current city regulations, policies, and practices. Simplify and clarify language and terms, provide more effective enforcement tools, and make non-substantial modifications to the city's pre-treatment ordinance and programs.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I know it sounds silly, but I'm excited to have Chapter 38 before you tonight. I know you all got a copy, but it's 86 pages long. So it's a lot of work. I have condensed it down into 16 slides, which doesn't really do it justice, but hopefully it covers the high points. So I'm gonna handle the presentation, but Carrie Weir from our utilities department is here. Amanda is here from my office. So if we get into any real, real tough questions, I might have to rely on them. So Chapter 38 is all about water. Water, our water system, our wastewater system. And so the title that we are proposing is Water, Sewer, and Sewage Disposal. We talked about it workshop last meeting that, I may have to do the, can you advance the slide for me, Amanda? Sorry. My, oh, okay. Make it. So sorry about that. We talked about it workshop that currently, there's several articles in Chapter 38. Article one, dealing with connections to the water and wastewater system. Article two, on our billing procedures for utility services. Article three, water service outside of the city. We have our industrial waste standards, cross-connection regulation, and then liquid waste regulations, which is our regulations on fats, oils, and grease. So with all of our chapters, we're trying to standardize the formats. We want them to look the same. We're trying to update processes and make sure that what is in our ordinance is what is actually happening and what staff is really doing. So that's the overall, overall goal, or a couple of them. In the proposed amendments, still several articles. Article one is definitions. We're trying to make that consistent throughout all the chapters. Article two is pollution of water sources. Article three is now connections to the, the water and sanitary sewer systems. Article four is our billing and customer service, so those utility business office regulations. Five is still industrial waste standards and cross-connection control. And six, and liquid waste. And seven. So I'll go through each of those pretty quickly, but stop me if you have questions. As I said, with all of our chapters, we're trying to move all of the definitions up to the front. We weren't totally successful in that for this chapter. We'll talk about Article five, our industrial waste standards. But for certain reasons, we had to leave those definitions in Article five until we can do some more substantial modifications to that article. And then there's a couple of definitions that we also had to leave in Article four on our billing and customer service. But for the most part, all of those definitions are moved into Article one, again, making it consistent with those other chapters. And that we feel like having the definitions up front helps with readability. You're not flipping through each article to find that separate definition section. You can just go back to Article one to see all of your definitions. Article two is really short. It's called pollution of water sources. It discusses our raw water intake works. So where water is obtained from the Leon River and enters into the city's treatment system. Article two designates that area as a restricted zone and prohibits recreational activities and trespassing in that area. So that's, again, a pretty short article, but that's the summary of it. Article three is water and sanitary sewer connection regulations. So talking about when someone can, can connect to the public system. This was definitely a portion of this chapter that needed to be updated for current, and implementing current processes. What, what is currently in the chapter is not how things are actually happening. And so we're, we tried to outline that process. If someone wants to connect to the city's water or sewer system, a city permit is required before that connection can be made. A person can request that the city perform the work and make the connection. And the city can agree to do so. And this, the amendments allow us to charge a fee for that work if that does happen. But if someone wants to do the work and connect to the system, they are required to have that permit. The amendments outline the procedure for obtaining a permit. They have to submit an application, provide their construction plans for the work, property owner information, who's gonna supervise it, and any other important information that public works requires. When those requirements have been met, a permit will be issued. All work that's performed has to be inspected and accepted by the public works department prior to, to, to use of that connection. Some other regulations in Article three. We do have a section that states if, if a lot is within 200 feet of an existing sanitary sewer line, any structures that are constructed on that lot have to be connected to the system. So if you're that close, you do have to make that connection. It is, there's a section that makes it unlawful for any person to interfere with or somehow damage the city's water system. We require compliance with all construction standards, and those are found in several places. Our Design and Development Standards Manual, our Code of Ordinances, and then any other applicable state and federal, federal regulations. If it is found that work was done on the private side to connect to the public system that is not compliant with those regulations, then that connection cannot be made or can be disconnected. So that moves us into Article four on billing and customer service. So this is the article that states our authority to charge and collect free utility services. Utility services is water, wastewater, solid waste services, and drainage. It also gives us the ability to set those rates and establish just different classes of customers for rates. That can be residential, commercial, or industrial classes. And so we have that authority there. We also discuss in detail the procedures for setting up utility services. You have to submit an application. A majority of the time, a deposit will be required, but it sets forth those instances when, when a deposit may not be required. It talks about your, the monthly billing cycle for utility services, your billing date, your due date, when your account becomes delinquent, when we can disconnect your service because your account has become delinquent. So all of those processes are set forth in the proposed amendments. It also gives us the ability to, if someone requests a connection appointment, so they want to connect to our service, we actually have to send out a staff member to make that connection. If that appointment is scheduled and the person who requests it fails to be present and doesn't give enough notice, that we can charge a trip fee for going out there. So really just setting out those administrative processes for, for billing and connecting and receiving service. It does give us, the city, the ability to refuse an application for utility service, to interrupt service, or refuse to resume service in certain instances. That can be when a customer fails to pay charges that are due by the disconnect date. So it's kind of your last chance to pay any amounts that are owed. If anyone causes damage to a city water meter, we can refuse service or interrupt service. If a person is unlawfully using water or is benefiting from utility service diversion, or if they've provided false information on their application. An unlawful, unlawful use of water service would be someone who knowingly takes water from a faucet or water connection without getting the consent of the owner of that service address. So you're stealing water, basically, from someone. Or diverting or using water from the city's system without receiving, receiving the city's consent to do so. A utility service diversion is a person's unauthorized action to divert utility service by preventing accurate measurement of utility usage, altering metering equipment to prevent accurate meter readings or billings, or altering utility account records or computer data to prevent accurate billings. So in all of those instances, the city does have the ability to refuse service or interrupt service if needed. The amendments also allow the city to interrupt service if interruption is necessary to protect public health or safety. We do, the amendments do require that the city gives 10 days' notice before interrupting service unless it's a public health and safety situation. That notice will state the reasons for the interruption. If it's because of delinquent charges, it'll provide the amount due. If it's because of some other violation that's occurring, it will describe that violation. And then also explain to the customer how they need to cure the delinquency or abate the violation, or dispute the validity of, of those charges or the alleged violation, if that's, if that is the case. So that's all of Article four. Article five is industrial waste standards. It's our regulations, the city's regulations, to ensure that pollutants don't enter into the wastewater system that would negatively impact the collection system, the wastewater treatment facilities, or the environment. The regulations are focused on industrial waste, which are those liquid wastes that are generated from industrial processes. And in certain circumstances, industrial users are required to pre-treat their waste before discharging into the public system to make sure the system is protected. So these regulations are heavily regulated by state law and the TCEQ. So our ability to make changes to this article at this time are somewhat limited. We can make non-substantial modifications, which is what we're proposing in this round of amendments and what TCEQ has signed off on. There are more substantial changes that need to be made to this article. But TCEQ views them as substantial changes, which is a much longer and lengthier process to get their approval. So staff is in the process of working on those substantive changes. But for this round of amendments, we are just proposing some non-substantial modifications that TCEQ has approved. And those, I'm gonna generally talk about them, but don't ask me any hard questions about them. I'll have to get Carrie up here to explain them. So the amendments that have been reviewed and approved by TCEQ is a reallocation of our biochemical oxygen demand limits to increase the current allowable limits, BOD limits, to contributing industrial users. So this reallocation will take unused BOD from non-contributing users and reallocate it to those users that need more. They need a higher limit. So if you have one user that's not using, that, that is below, you know, maybe way below their limit, you can reallocate their, what they're not using to someone who needs it. And so that's part of this change. And then the other change is to incorporate the chemical oxygen demand limit that was outlined in a local limit study done in 1991. So those are the changes to Article five. And as, as staff goes through that more substantial review with TCEQ, additional changes will come forward. And so Article six is cross-connection. Those regulations are meant to ensure that the water system is protected from pollutants and contaminants. The changes here that we, I wanted to highlight are those that we talked about in workshop at length a couple of weeks ago. So, and those have to do really with backflow prevention assemblies. We talked a lot about those specifically in, related to irrigation systems. So this first reference here to Chapter seven, there's, in these amendments, in 38, it references Chapter seven. And we all talked about Chapter seven, actually, today in workshop. But proposed amendments to Chapter seven will allow double-check backflow protection assemblies to be used on irrigation systems. Currently, that type of assembly is not allowed in the city. So these two chapters work, work together on this issue in some respects. So once we get this round of amendments done, and then if you consider and approve the amendments to Chapter seven, then those types of assemblies will be allowed. Double-check assemblies will not be allowed, though, on any applications that are designated as health hazards by TCEQ. And those are any irrigation systems which have some sort of chemical injection built into them, or on property, irrigation systems on property served by septic system. Also importantly, Also importantly for cross-connection, the proposed amendments outline testing requirements for all backflow devices after they've been installed. So there's an annual testing requirement for irrigation on properties served by septic system. That is a state law requirement, so just implementing that into Chapter 38. The proposed amendments would require an annual testing for all assemblies on commercial property, whether they're served by a septic system or not. And then for residential irrigation not served by a septic system, those systems would need to be tested every five years. And as a reminder, TCEQ does require testing of those types of systems, but leaves it up to the city to determine the frequency, and staff's proposal is every five years. So then very quickly, Article VII is on liquid waste, and that is our fats, oils, and grease chapter, FOG. That chapter was just adopted in September of 2017, so there are really no major changes in this article. We did increase, or we are proposing to increase some civil fines related to violations of this article, but other than that, there are, there are really no, you know, major changes proposed. So that is what I have on 38, and, and this, that presentation really doesn't do it justice. It's a very technical chapter, and it's, it's important regulations related to our water and wastewater systems. And as always, there are a lot of other people that have worked hours and hours on this. Amanda Rice in my office, and Carrie Weir, and Heather Wilson Ellis in Public Works, and others in Public Works did the majority of the work. And I think it's a, I, I think it's a great chapter that really gets us back in line, updates our processes, easier to read, to the extent that these technical regulations can be easy to read. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and I know they are as well.
Just before that begins, Kayla, I don't think you mentioned Article VIII. It's a relatively new addition. It was on the memo in the agenda packet, but, and our old, I guess not our old, our current Chapter 38, there's a very small section that talks about well regulation, that talks about a permit and a water superintendent, both of which doesn't exist anymore. And so in conversations with Carrie Weir and other people at the Public Works Department, it was discussed that we should have some well regulations that need to be updated. And so the City of Temple works with the Clearwater Water Conservation District. I could be saying their name wrong, but it's an organization that regulates different kinds of, I guess, water conservation. I don't really know, but they do regulate wells in our community and the surrounding cities around us. And so they suggested some regulations, just basically that anyone who wants to build in the well in the city would have to comply with their regulations, which they would have to anyway. And it also gives the city some approval authority to make sure that people who are connecting wells do it safely, and also that if they are required to connect to our city water, they do that as well. So just a heads up about that. That is in Article VIII. It's the second-to-last article in the full 86 pages that you have before you.
We, there's some well regulations in the current Chapter 38 that are, again, outdated. And we don't, I mean, I don't know that, in my time here, I've seen, you know, maybe a handful of requests come in from Clearwater to ask the city's approval on wells when people ask to, to have wells on their property. So just between last work session and today, we, Amanda drafted that language and got it in, so thank you.
Ball.
Counsel.
I do have one question. Can you back up, I think, to six, under the irrigation part?
Next one.
Okay, the, the middle one, where it says annual testing for all assemblies on commercial property. That's still, you're only referring to irrigation.
No, that would be for all backflow devices. So if they've got, you know, we talked about the coffee machines and, yes, sorry, yes, that would be broader than just irrigation, so.
That's, that's not something TCEQ requires. That's a city.
I think you've got, what you have, I know this is a, I know this is a hard topic. What I think you have flexibility on here is the backflow prevention devices that are in place on non-health hazard connections. And TCEQ requires testing of those, but does not specify the frequency. So you have the, you have the ability to set the frequency on backflow prevention devices that are connected to health hazard connections. The TCEQ has set the mandatory testing frequency as annual. So your, your staff recommendation here is annual testing on all assemblies on commercial properties, whether or not they're a health hazard connection or, or not. But you could, if you wanted to, set a different timeframe for non-health hazard connections. And then your staff recommendation for residential properties is non-health hazard irrigation connections at five years. Again, that's, that is your discretion on the frequency, but you have to have the testing.
And, and two, for, for irrigation systems, the health hazard situations are just those that have some, some sort of chemical injection, or are on properties with septic system. Those other connections that we've talked about that might be internal to the building, those could be health hazards, could be classified as health hazards as well, so.
But for non-health hazards, every year seems, a little too often. I don't see why we couldn't extend that to three to five.
Heather, would you be able to come and speak to kind of what other connections would be considered health hazards?
And Heather, while you're coming up, just to add on to Jessica's question, just straightforward, are we talking about coffee pots in restaurants? And, well, not just restaurants and businesses, because that's what I'm getting calls about. Do I have to do my coffee pot?
So there, there's lots of different variables whenever we talk backflow protection. Some health hazard connections that are internal would be a carbonator, so the soda fountain machines that mix the carbonation with the soda. Depending on the makeup of the plumbing that's attached to those, that carbonation can react with the type of material and potentially cause the copper to leach back into the water. So if it's not protected, you're potentially allowing that copper to get back into, whether it be the water within that entity, or depending on if there's backflow protection at that entity's meter, it could go back into the distribution system. So while we don't think of restaurants as a health hazard typically, if they have a carbonator, it essentially makes them a health hazard facility because that is on their property. Non-health hazards, juice machines, coffee pots, no, it's not probably going to cause somebody to get sick, just maybe a foul taste. There have been some very rare, odd cases where someone that's on a medication that shouldn't be having acidic juices, if that is backflowed into their drinking water, could have an adverse effect. Same thing for caffeine. There are certain medications that react with caffeine. Again, those are very rare, but it does happen. You have fire lines, so you have big, major, they're usually six-inch and larger fire lines. Not a lot of them in the basic commercial, if you will, are injected with any kind of toxic chemicals that would cause that to be an immediate health hazard, but typically there's zero flow going through those. So as the water sits there, it's not receiving any fresh water, so all those materials, the minerals and whatnot, they're settling. We can actually, we have somebody here that witnessed a backflow event, not here in Temple, but the water that came out of that fire suppression system when it backflowed was black. So again, it might not be lethal, but it, it could be a pretty big issue. So the utility takes a stance of, we want to make sure that there's safe water for everybody out of every tap, whether it be from a juice machine or from a health hazard event. The other complication that comes with changing the frequencies for a business is while we send notification to the businesses telling them what assemblies are required to be tested, if they're not active and engaged in their fixtures, they could be paying a tester to come out and test a facility that, or test an assembly that's not due for testing. So now they've had an additional expense of possibly testing one that shouldn't have been tested for another couple of years. So we try to do the best to make it easier for budgeting purposes. I understand that it, sometimes it can be cumbersome when you have a lot of them in a certain type of facility. They're not required to put those fixtures in for their business, so it would be their choice to connect to the system. And we really feel strongly that if they choose to connect, they need to do so in a safe manner, and make sure that the assemblies that are in place to keep that safety measure intact is, is checked on a regular basis. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
This item is also subject to a public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak on this matter may do so. Please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record.
Do you understand it, ma'am?
Me neither.
Marty Janzak, 12 North Fifth, Temple. I represent the Temple Area Builders and Developers, and I appreciate, first off, I will compliment the staff on working with us. We've had an issue with this problem for years. They've been very respected, receptive in working with us, provided some seminars, and we're just very grateful for that. The proposed residential changes are very effective, certainly when, and we agree with all the residential proposals, absolutely. If there's a health hazard, then yes, it needs the reduced pressure zone and the annual inspection. They have agreed that if it's a non-health hazard, they can back off and use the old double-check valves that we all have used years ago, and we appreciate that. That will save a lot of people, residences, money, and hopefully it'll make some of our fake rocks go away, because the device that's underneath the fake rock is the reduced pressure zone that was, was required. We do not agree with the proposed annual requirement for non-health hazard commercial inspections. If it's a health hazard, absolutely, positively, it needs to be done. But if it's not, then maybe we should examine a longer period. And so I would appreciate you, I appreciate you all looking at that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Janzak. Anybody else? All right, there being nobody else, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion on item 10.
So if I make a motion to approve item 10, do I put in that amendment? Okay. So I'll make a motion to approve item 10, but extending the life five years for non-health hazard commercial entities for backflow prevention devices. Slowly spinning it out.
So approving, if, if you don't mind, I'll just make sure, so approving the amendments with the, changing the testing requirements for.
Slowly for non.
For non, or, I'm sorry, for non-health hazards on commercial property to five years. So annual testing for health hazards on commercial property and five-year testing for non.
Second.
Essentially making no designation between commercial and residential.
Right.
Five years on both for non-health hazard.
It just applies to more assemblies on a commercial property, not just irrigation.
Right, right. We have a motion?
May I make, may I ask a question before we have a second? And may I ask a question of the audience? May I ask a question?
Public hearing is closed.
They wouldn't be able to answer you.
Okay. Make your second.
Oracle question.
Yeah.
We have a clumsy motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
This is with, with your, whatever it was you did. Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
No.
Mayor Protem Morales. Mayor Davis.
Aye. Moving on to item 11, which is to consider adopting a resolution authorizing the nominations of a member to serve on the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance Board of Directors. Counsel, we've discussed in, in workshop this appointment. Marty Janzak, I have spoken with him personally. He was recommended for this post. I've spoken with him personally, and this is a post that he is enthusiastic about taking on. So with that being the case, unless I hear any dissension for other nominations, I'll accept a motion in a second on Mr. Janzak fulfilling the Heart of Texas Defense Alliance Board of Directors position representing the City of Temple.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. Item 12 is to consider adopting a resolution appointing one member of the Temple Economic Development Corporation Board of Directors. Again, we've had discussion about this, and is, is this, this isn't for the chair. That was handled in, on the consent.
That is correct.
Okay, yes, yes.
This is Mr. [inaudible].
Very good. Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize for that. I get those confused sometimes. So to consider adopting a resolution appointing one member to the TEDC Corporation Board of Directors. Need a nomination for that person?
So I'll move to reappoint Blake.
Second.
Motion.
Good, we have a motion and a second. Madam Secretary.
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. Item 13 is to consider adopting a resolution appointing members to the following city boards and commissions. The only one I think that, that we have not discussed and decided on, not voted on, but discussed, is we're needing a member for the Temple Public Safety Advisory Board, which is item H. I don't think you guys have this list, so.
I believe, Ms. Morales.
Yes, I, I thought we had more than one nomination, but I'll go ahead and nominate. Sabrina Young, you'd like to nominate Sabrina Young?
Okay, we're needing, so our discussion was to reappoint Eric Stalbaum, appoint Richard Arwood, Sandra Creach, and Sabrina Young. We're needing one more in addition.
Gregory Gregg.
Gregory Gregg. So item 13 is to consider adopting a resolution appointing members of, to, to the following city boards and commissions. First one is the Airport Advisory Board. Discussion from counsel has led us to reappoint Steve Wright, who will represent TEDC, appoint Perry Cloud, Dr. Edward McCaffrey, Marty Janzak, and Tate Settiman to fill expiring terms through September 1st, 2022. The next one is the Animal Services Advisory Board is to appoint Eric Brown to fill an expiring term through September 1st, 2022. On the Building and Standards Commission Board is to appoint Bruce Norman to fulfill an unexpired term through March 1st, 2021. On the Civil Service Commission to reappoint Brian Daniel to fill an expiring term through September 1st, 2022. On the Library Board is to reappoint Robert Curtis and Robin Dadeg, and to appoint Matthew Davis to fill expiring terms through September 1st, 2022, and to appoint a new member, Brenda Warwick, to fulfill an unexpired term through September 1st, 2020. On the Planning and Zoning Commission to reappoint current members Brian Ward, Daniel Jeans, and Lee Armstrong to fill expiring terms through September 1st, 2022. And on the Reinvestment Zone, number one Board of Directors is to reappoint Harry Adams, Sanjanet Crossley, Brian Daniel, Calvin Sanders, Commissioner Bill Schuman, Bob Browder, Steve Wright, and to appoint Tanya McKesker-Reed to fill expiring terms through September 1, 2021, and to reappoint Tyler Johnson for a one-year extension through September 1st, 2020, as the current chair. And then last is the Temple Public Safety Advisory Board to reappoint Eric Stalbaum, and to appoint Richard Arwood, Sandra Creach, Sabrina. and to appoint Richard Arwood, Sandra Creach, Sabrina Young, and Gregory Greg to fill expiring terms through September 1st, 2022. Counsel, before we vote on that, are there any thoughts?
You've given it a lot of thought.
We have, we've worked through that. Very good. Then, there being no discussion, I'll entertain a motion on Item 13, A through H.
Move for adoption of Item 13, A through H.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Madam Secretary?
Councilmember Long.
Aye.
Councilmember Walker.
Aye.
Councilmember Williams.
Aye.
Mayor Proton Morales.
Aye.
Mayor Davis.
Aye. Item 14 is to receive comments from Councilmember Long regarding Code of Ordinance, Chapter Six, Animals.
Thank you, Mayor. This is, this is rather unusual, but I felt very uncomfortable at the, at the, not the last council meeting, but the previous one, there was not dissension, but disagreement or, or some confusion about the Animal Services Advisory Board request for us to approve miniature pigs as household pets. And I was in favor of that. I've worked with, done some work with the, with our animal services, and some other people were not, and we had residents who were very opposed to it, and I've had a number of calls, very opposed. And so, I'd just like to say that I did ask Lieutenant Hunt, who's from the police department, assigned to the advisory animal services, to keep track of miniature pig issues and let us know on a routine basis. And this is not set in concrete forever. We can change it if need be, if, if the need arose. And that's really all I had to say. We can change it. We really don't anticipate herds of pigs flowing through the streets. Thanks, Mayor.
But if they're under 150 pounds?
Exactly.
Okay, very good. Before we adjourn, I've noticed Marion Grayson is in attendance tonight, Mayor over in Belton. Thank you for being here tonight. And if there are no further comments from counsel, then I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you all very much for attending tonight.